Okay, call the meeting to order if you would please. Um, do pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republican Party's stance on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. How do we start at going down the meeting? And all that stuff, I would like to just say, um, Richard LaPierre passed away, one of our board members here just recently, just a few, few days ago. And, uh, just want you to know he passed away. What's that then? Um, doctoring of the agenda? Or your motion?
Uh, I would say to adopt the current agenda, the revised one, the second one that I got.
Uh, any comments or questions by the board? Call in favor? Won't you carry approval of minutes of seven twenty-four, twenty-three and seven twenty-seven? Twenty-three.
Make a motion of approval of minutes of seven twenty-four, twenty-three, seven twenty-seven, twenty-three.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, I would second that.
Any comments or questions by the board? Call in favor? Any opposed? Won't you carry? Move on to the road report.
So since our last meeting, we graded New Boston Road, High Road, uh, Lewis Road in its entirety. We broke that into three different sections because it's such a long road. And we've got from the south end to the north end completely done. We also added material to all of those roads as well. Uh, we also did a quick grade of Ward Road. It was in pretty rough shape. We had our pre-construction meeting for Watkins Culver, um, replacements. Right now there's currently two culverts side by side, and that's going to be replaced with a squash tube. Culver, um, A and R had to come out and do a little pre-construction meeting and, and just discuss what couldn't, couldn't be done during the construction process of that. Uh, we've, we've been cutting the brush and trees in Watkins still. We met with the boom mower operator. And he's started the brush cutting, so if anybody sees a green John Deere tractor with a boom mower out and about, it's a guy that we contracted to do our, our roadside mowing for the year. Bear with us, so if it gets a little messy in the road or whatever, you know, give a call to the, the town office and, and we'll come out with a blower and we'll, we'll clear the road out of the way. Went over some of our upcoming MRGP work with Sarah Pelkey. So we can get started on that. I had a question about the repeater status, if we've made any grounds on that actually. I'd really like to see that get done before winter time. It's, and we have those dead zones and hopefully that'll alleviate our, our radio silence in some of our areas where we also don't have cell service. In the event of an emergency or, or something. So I'm just kind of hoping to get that, that push along.
Are we working on that or waiting for?
So we were waiting for FCC approval, which we got the approval. Yep, and.
Working with some Green Mountain Power, um, to put it on the pole on the, where the village, um, water reservoir is. And, uh, they're working on it. I'm going to circle, um, Nate Bornan at the fire department. Um, because it's, a lot of it's over my head. But yeah, we'll work on it.
We, uh, we had a lot of damage on Pond Hill Ranch and Pond Hill Road. Pond Hill Road is off the Castleton side down from the ranch. It's, it's, a lot of people think that that's actually Castleton, but it's still Paulme. Goes up towards Point, Pointe Tech Road and on the other side it goes to, yeah, interlocks to Steso, turns into Steso Road. Uh, we had a lot of damage washes, just continuous washes over there, so we've, we've been doing a lot of work over there. Adding material, grading, re-grading, adding more material. Um, that's probably going to be a problem till we can actually ditch it because without a ditch, the water's got to go somewhere and it rides at the lowest point of the road and just keeps eroding out of the way. And so all that material that you put on ends up in the ditch or downstream or whatever. We came in for a tree down on Ward Road on the eleven. Took care of that and, uh, we had to do a little bank stabilization on Fenton Road where we had to wash across the, up toward the top of Fenton Road. By the Quill Hill area. And the beavers are back on the big pond on Hillside Road. So we've been in and out of there consistently reopening the culvert in water flowing. You know, that whole, you know, and we've got a grate and hopefully, hopefully we'll be good for that for a while so it doesn't overwhelm the road and run over the road. And, uh, I had the Fennel Hollow hazmat incident on my report too, because I spoke with absolute spill response today. I tried to contact A and R. William Sisson that came up from A and R to deal with that thing. And, uh, I was not able to get an update from him, but I was able to get from absolute spill response that they, they got the results back and it was number two fuel oil and they also found amounts of, um, heavy metals and they said that that would have been like a used hydraulic oil. I believe A and R is the one that released the statement. Don't quote me on this, I'm just going off of what I read and I didn't read it today, so I can't tell you the exact, or they said it was like approximately, approximately 200 gallons of, of that material, so. As far as new stuff goes, that's.
So can I interject?
Absolutely.
William Sisson did for the, uh, for the absolute spill did. And, um, like you said, it appears to be a mixture of diesel fuel with additional constituents. Uh, it's been assigned to a D E C enforcement team. Uh, and I left them a number, or excuse me, a message this morning to see, while I don't expect they're going to give me the, the full details of their investigation, I just want us to stay on top of it and, um, see if we can come out for any assistance.
And are we, are we getting into the discussion of the roads now?
Sure, it's on the agenda.
Okay. Um, so the last time we met, we discussed, uh, the roads, not doing layer maintenance, if not giving up the road. Uh, for, for multiple different roads, um. You know, everybody got a chance, I don't know if everybody got a chance to go out and look at all the roads that were in question that we spoke about. And, uh, for everybody's thoughts were on, on those. Yeah.
My initial assessment is we don't know what definitely drive works, but how it got to be county road, I have no idea, but they thought it's okay driveway, local driveway.
Contain local driveways and mainline.
Contain local driveway.
The only question I can do is moving up to the trailer on way up the top, which I had in the winter time. It's really bad, I understand that, but then there are two houses that are really close.
Down below.
Yeah, but you're not sure how, is he able to make the whole road, you're limited, I don't know that that's a possibility.
You can't plow off. If you finish it, you'll be plowed off the side. So.
But I was asking, would you have to back up and come back in?
That I'm not doing.
Yeah, so if, if you weren't going to do the whole thing, but you're going to do part of it, that means you'd have to back down it. And that's potentially, that's going to be more dangerous, risky than, than.
To turn around, that's a, you make the corner.
There's two lanes that stay properly.
No, one's on both sides and, and it's, it's like, it's not that far off, but it's probably also, I think that they mark that little section, I think you just have to make sure you give that fair warning that, you know, while you're dealing with traffic, but there's a section like here to the other, they're going to have to how we get out of those, right? Those two on the right, one on the left.
You got two on the left. And as it goes up and it sneaks around to the right, and then you've got that one right there on the right, there's only one on the right, two on the left, and then it's all vacant trailers from that town on.
Timmy.
Yeah. And I, you know, Dick's had multiple incidents up there trying to get turned around. He has to go up and he has to turn around to the left, like it kind of, I don't know if I really got into this before, I was trying not to drag this along. Uh, but I just want to make sure that there's an understanding of the reasoning for this. Like I said before, it's not out of laziness, it's, it's out of concern for our drivers. For our 200,000 plus dollar equipment. Uh, you know, when you're going up to the trailer park and you come down, Dick came down two winters ago with no air brakes. And the Maxes did not lock up and help him. Um, that's a.
A Lennox Road is the biggest problem of them all.
Yeah, we just dump, dump, dump out up, up the driveway.
I would say that's the riskiest.
It's steep.
Yeah. Fairlane off, uh, Fairway Lane, excuse me, off of Lakeview across from the golf course on thirty. Yeah.
The hill's driveway.
I know it's got, you know, it's a lane and everything, but it, it's one house and there's nowhere to turn around. If you back in, you back out, if you drive in, you back out. And it's all on a, you know, I didn't get out there to measure the, the actual grade of Lakeview going up, but you're going from quite an angle to trying to get on flat ground. Or from flat ground onto quite an angle and that's just, it's, it's extremely rough. I, I can tell you, I've never actually timed it to see how much time is spent turning that jockey truck into some of these places.
We'd have to research to see if that, when that was, to your point. Made to a class, you know, classification road that town has to take care of, what was it before? Um, that's something we'd have to look at first for that one.
Some of those roads used to loop, right?
They loop, uh, I, I don't know if that particular driveway. No, I don't know. I did talk to Frank Fessy about it because I seen him Tuesday. And he said the state downside, you have to block off the end of the upper road. That is the right way to the State Park.
At the top one?
The top one is an extension to the State Park.
Root of Yu Lane South.
The one up by Frank.
Yeah, yeah, that's Root Yu Lane South.
Right, if you go to the end, it can actually be State Park, you want that close to. So that one may be an issue.
Let's, let's, we got so much to cover tonight, let's table this and, and talk about it at another.
Yeah.
Possibly the next meeting, let's table this for the next meeting on the roads for declassification. Is that okay with the board?
Yeah, but, but, but it's on the one, uh, Oliver, um.
Oliver Allen, off of Gorienton Road.
Yeah.
Just across from the bridge.
Right, Paul, did, did you find that anything out about?
Um, I haven't had a chance to look, I actually thought about it this morning, but I, I didn't look.
Okay.
And maybe it's my obligation, but we're not aware.
Yep. We'll have to find out about Fairwood Lane versus State Park. When it became our responsibility.
Right.
Okay.
That is all I've got on the road report.
Any one have any questions?
Thank you guys, good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been using the microphone like a veteran.
Yeah.
Much better.
I mean, the Powell's are coming back, but, uh, all its range consistently. For anyone that's not aware, we can't go grade a road, tear up four to six inches of a road and expect it to lay back down and bind up tight before the next big rainfall or, or the road's going to be a complete odd hole, unfortunately.
Kind of like getting paid.
What's up?
Kind of like getting paid.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, it's going to rain again tonight, tomorrow.
So we, we haven't been out in the, in between rain. One of the best we can with it.
Tough summer.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
You don't have to say if you don't wish to.
I got some stuff for the, the white, weight finding part two.
Okay.
Do you want to, do you want to do that now?
Oh, it doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so we had installed the signs, uh, that Sarah Pelkey got the grant for, I don't know, um, for the, for the bike trails, for the town fair, I believe it's.
Fairgrounds.
Fairgrounds, I saw those.
Yeah, we installed those and, um, actually there's one right across over here and that one was already bent. And I took some pictures of that and straightened it back out today, but, uh, we were able to attach all the signs to the current signposts within the location that they were specified to be in. And, um, we only had to put one post in, so it was fairly quick, simple and hope it helps someone. That's all I got for that part.
Okay. All right, anything else, Joe?
No, unless anybody's got any questions or comments or concerns.
Can I have one comment? And, um, I had called Paul the other day regarding the C and D debris that was dropped on the side of the road at the junction of Clark Power and Lucher Allen. Someone cleaned it up, so you guys did it, thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks to you.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. I'll stick.
Okay. Town managers report.
So I've got the, the board asked the Polley Rescue Squad to come and meet some of the board members that you may have not met and have some discussion, and I think there's some folks here from the Polley Rescue Squad. So I'd give them the floor.
Hi, I'm Debbie Poisonson. I am meeting from administrator for the rescue squad at this point. We are doing our best to keep the town going as far as the rescue squad. We are, as with every other agency in the United States, short-staffed. Um, it is a nationwide shortage. We are advertising, we're in the process of advertising for more providers. Um, I don't know if anybody here in the room is in the medical field, but in medical field is a nationwide shortage for providers and staff. And when you work in the field, you get burnt out very quickly since COVID came around. We're working on trying to work with our schedule to see if we can find a new way to make it work better for the providers that we do have and keep the coverage for the town. We realize that we have dropped calls and not been able to respond to all the calls that have come in from town and our surrounding towns that we cover. Um, our reimbursements are down, as with anybody's medical reimbursements are down. Um, financially, we are okay. So it's not a financial issue, uh, it's staffing issue because people are leaving fields faster than they're coming into the field. Two years ago, we had fifteen people joining a class, we have waiting lists for people to become EMS providers. Now we have six people joining the classes at a time if we're lucky. And then they don't even stay. So with that being said, we're doing our best. I know it doesn't feel like we're doing our best, or especially if one of you have been one of the ones that we have missed a call for, or you waited an exorbitant amount of time for someone to respond for a call. Um, we do apologize for that. Um, I know there was a person in town who never got a response and she did call and complain. We can't control other agencies. The biggest agency in our county in Rutland, which is regional, has five trucks and there's times that he's only running two. So if that gives you any indication as to what the situation is and the direness of it, that's where we're at. Um, Fairhaven has one full-time crew that she runs. She can keep one truck on the road. And she has a huge roster of people, so it's not just Polley that's having a problem, it's every agency in the area. We usually try to keep in contact with all our surrounding agencies and hope that they can back us up when we don't have a crew. We have one full-time person, Katrina, the rest are per diem. And when we do get other providers, they're coming from other agencies to help us. So they're working for multiple agencies. We have two providers on, one works for regional, two work for regional. Josiah works for regional, Mason works for regional, Cadence works for Fairhaven. Rachel works for a full-time, she's a volunteer. Mike works full-time, he's a volunteer. Mike McLean works full-time and he volun, he works with us per diem. So everybody has a full-time job. It's not like it used to be where you had volunteers who were home all day and could volunteer and just respond on a minute's notice. I work full-time at Rutland and I volunteer a lot of hours to Polley. Both to the squad and to the thrift shop. So it's, we're doing our best to keep it, it's going and to keep it covered. Um, Katrina puts in a lot of hours, more than her forty hours. She did six years of a wonderful job of doing administration for it. And it's exhausting. I've been doing it since April when she stepped down. Um, and it's a tough job, it's a very tough job.
Debbie, can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
Where do you see the future of it? Because I know there's been a lot of money we're putting in and we're wondering like, where do you see the future of the rescue squad if we're having that much trouble? I know Katrina and we, or the board, we had that discussion last year too of not getting the support. Maybe more money was going to help entice more members to come in and be a part of the rescue squad? It sounds like that's not happening.
It's not a case of the money, well, yes, the fu, the, the wages, but it's, doesn't, wages are not always, it's, when you ride in the back of the bo, of a box and you're being abused or you're being threatened or you have people who are violent to you, you quickly want to get out of this field. You don't want to do it anymore. And that's the scary part and that's where it's going. You know, in, in Rutland, regional doesn't send an ambulance to some of the scenes without three people because somebody has to stay with their ambulance, they can't leave the ambulance because somebody will steal it. We have it easy out here because we don't have that kind of problem yet. I say yet because we're not immune to it out here.
Um,
so we're trying.
I've been asking for quite a while. Budget season's coming up. And I've been asking for a number of years very politely to meet with the board.
Okay.
And they have not responded.
Okay, we meet every three months.
Want to meet them here.
Okay, is there a reason that we have to meet here?
Would like to see and give an explanation from the board before over eighty thousand dollars goes.
I can give you my nine ninety right now.
Because the board, we would like to talk to the board members and see what they think about the future of the rescue squad. If it's going defunct or like you say.
It's not going to.
You're having a hard time getting help.
Everyone does. Everyone does.
Be nice to even just sit down and have a good conversation with the board and see if we can come up with some ways to help.
If, if money isn't a problem, is there any talk about hiring more full-time staff than just Katrina or?
We're getting ready to put ads out again.
Absolutely.
We've done, we've done it multiple times, Katrina has put the ads out. We get one or two people, they come for a while and then they it's not a busy stick, it's not a busy service. So they get bored and they move on to a busier service.
Okay.
Or better, or better.
Skirted the question that I asked.
I'm sorry.
Um.
I mean, I can ask Walter.
I'm asking you to ask them if they would please come.
Walter had plans and was on vacation and Kathy, I believe, was on vacation this week also. I can ask them, I can see, um.
How many board members do you have?
Three.
That's including you?
Yes.
Okay, you're on the board.
I am also on the board at this.
So we don't even know that.
I've been on the board for five years, my name's been in the town report for five years. Actually longer because I was on the board when that winter was, was the president also.
Okay.
So, um, a couple of years ago, and I'm, I'm guessing you know this because you're on the board.
Mm-hmm.
But for some of the public that's present that maybe not know this and maybe some of our newer board members that might not know the history of, um, the town funding to the, and sorry if my back is towards you, it's just just awkward, I know, but, um, it's the nature of the room. Um, two budget seasons ago, the select board discussed with Katrina as the director of the Polley Rescue Squad. Uh, incremental budget, um, increases over a five-year period.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and two budget seasons ago, implemented the first stage of that five-year period.
Mm-hmm.
And then at the last budget season, uh, Katrina came to the board and said, that's, that incremental budgeting is not going to work. We need to, uh, double one hundred percent of what the select board budget, uh, presents to the voters and voters vote on to allocate towards the Polley Rescue Squad.
Mm-hmm.
And at that time, uh, some of the, we had some different board members here and some of the board, I think frankly, all of the board then had some concern about, uh, the sustainability of the Polley Rescue Squad and increasing the budget, doubling a forty-two thousand some odd, um, allocation to an eighty-four thousand some odd allocation. And, uh, chose to use forty-two thousand and change of their ARPA funds to fill that gap for your period with the representations by, uh, Katrina Davenport that she felt with that additional funding, she would be able to bring on more full-time staff. I appreciate the fact that you're saying that, um, it's difficult to get staff because I've run into it at the town, uh, highway department and the village departments as well, so I understand what you're saying about that. Long-winded question, but what happens if you can't get more full-time staff? Uh, because at the time Katrina felt confidently that, uh, and I won't say the hourly figure, that she could, she could attract more full-time staff at the rate that she had stated. Uh, and it sounds to me like you're saying not only the, not only the, the labor shortage, but also the, the nature of Polley Rescue Squad in the area maybe not being as exciting or busy as another rescue squad that, that compounds the fact that someone might not want, want to come to Polley.
Mm-hmm.
So if the allocation is doubled this year and you don't have staff that you're paying a full-time, what's going to happen to that other allocation? And what's going to happen next year if you come and this board starts talking about budgets in October? And you say, we need this, we need another eighty-seven thousand and you still have it's fully staffed. What, what do you see happening? Can you look into the future and give us a projection?
Shout out to Crystal Paul, I would love to be able to say that in a perfect world, we could get all the staff we need. That would be the perfect world, ideally, I would love to be able to say I would have five full-time people on and I would be able to staff it and be able to have everybody work twelve-hour shifts every day. But that's not going to be a perfect world, not in this, not with the way EMS is going. Um, all of our agencies in the area in talking with Mr. Finger who runs regional, Wayne Fitzgerald who runs, uh, Fairhaven, they've all majorly increased their payroll to meet the standards. It's pretty hard to buy, to get someone to work for fifteen dollars an hour when they can go to McDonald's and make seventeen dollars an hour. So that's what we're up against and that's what we've had to look, all, all of the EMS agencies have had to look at that and bring up the pay standards to making your drivers make twenty, twenty to twenty-two dollars an hour.
We're talking about seventeen, that's what we talked about with Katrina, was seventeen.
Yeah.
So, okay, that was part of the money because you knew it needs to go up.
And that's what, and that's what we're doing and we're, we're now got, we just now are getting our heads above water to where things are flowing. Our, our reimbursements can take anywhere from three to six months to come in, depending on the, the insurance company. Some of them take longer, the VA takes almost seven months for us to get sometimes. So money flow, we're, we're dependent on the insurance companies to pay sales sometimes. And then to be, I mean, not that it's the town's responsibility to pay our bills because if that was the case, we'd become municipal and we don't want to become municipal, we're an independent, we're. And we don't wanna become municipal, we're an independent, we're a self-sustainable company and we're doing it on our own. So if, that being said, we are putting the ads back out again. Katrina did at the beginning of the year, we're gonna do it again, see if we get response. And see what we can do. We're gonna, like, just like Regional did just a few months ago. They've got people, Fairhaven's got them, we're gonna do it again. We'll put the ads out, we'll see if we get responses. It's like with every job that's out there.
Okay. So there, um, you met, you mentioned the fact that you don't wanna become municipal, because that's been sort of on the peripheral at least. Have, has the Rescue Squad ever explored becoming municipal? And, um, and/or consolidating facilities? And that was always, uh, and I've been in this position for six years, I guess. That's always been since I've been here, completely, nope, we don't even wanna have that discussion. The board doesn't wanna have that discussion. Um, and I'm not suggesting that that is the solution. Um, but to hear a struggling entity like yourselves not explore other options is concerning, particularly given the fact that the town voters vote to, to, um, you know, allocate a substantial amount of money every year to your organization. So, you know, I hear that you're a standalone facility and I applaud the, we wanna do it on our own. But, but I think the, the voters, uh, and maybe I'm speaking out of line because I'm not on this board, but I think the voters deserve a, a consideration of, what else can we explore to make this entity that a number of people depend on in this community?
So where would you suggest that we would find the, the space to put Poltony Rescue that would be cost-saving?
That's why we would like to.
Well, it's funny you should say that because.
We don't pay anything for our building.
The last time it was discussed with Katrina Davenport,
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I remember, I was sitting right in the seat and she said, oh, it doesn't cost us anything to run that facility. And I'm, and I said, just from a quick look at what your, your numbers here, and without even using this machine, or this machine as a calculator, I was, I was seeing five to $6,000 a year in expenses that that facility is costing you. So to say, we own that facility and it's not costing us any money, I think is.
But.
Maybe a misunderstanding here.
If we go someplace, if we go someplace else, it's still gonna cost that money because you're still gonna have to pay the fuel, you're still gonna have to pay the power, you're still gonna have to pay the.
That's why we wanna sit down and talk with the board. Yeah.
And I'm not trying to throw you under the bus, I'm just saying that, that it's always been, uh, the response of, consider something else, no, we're our own entity. Um, and now we're here again, getting ready to talk about next budget, uh, year to propose to the voters, and I get calls almost every day. I'm not getting, how come, what's going on with the Rescue Squad? How come they're not responding?
Do you, do you, would you like to come and run calls with us?
That's not what I'm suggesting.
That's not, that's not really a good answer.
No, but that's, that's what our, that's what our problem is. It's not that we don't have the money to keep the, the business afloat. It's the case that we don't have the, the people applying for the job.
I, I understand that.
So whether we consolidate and go to, with the fire department or come and slip out of the town office, if we don't have the bodies to run the calls, it doesn't matter where we're housed.
That's all discussions we would like to have, again, with the board.
Okay, I will bring that, we have a board meeting this week. I will bring that back to, uh, the other two board members. But again, where we're housed is not gonna change the staffing issues.
That's.
And that's what the major problem is, and it's countrywide.
That's. So is it, it's better, do you double up with another town? If we can't do it, another town can't do it? I mean, I know on my road, Granville came from Granville all the way up to, to the Loop Road. Is it, is there another town that's doing the same thing, feeling the same pinch that we are?
Back, back when Katrina broke her elbow, beginning of last year, we depended on outline, outlining agencies to respond. And we got numbers from Washington County. And there were times that this town was waiting 30 minutes to an hour for other agencies to respond. So that's our, that's our fallback. If we condense with other agencies, it could be that.
That's what we wanna talk with the board about, all the possibility.
I did put a call in two weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
Gloungtown Road, for one of my clients up there.
Mm-hmm.
He had phoned, he'd been lying for three or four hours. So he said, call nine, I cannot pick him up. Sorry, sorry, okay, so I called, I got the dispatcher and there was a, Poltony wasn't on the phone, but 25 minutes later, it rang, it was still. The Gloungtown, I'm like.
There's a lot of situations that have come up and we can speak about them all in the rest of the night.
Mm-hmm.
Right. But, um, right now, if you would please convey to the board that we would like to meet with them.
Mm-hmm.
And it's not for anything but maybe a brainstorm. Maybe a better understanding, maybe more eyes see a better future. I don't know. That's all I'm asking.
Okay.
And I guess to, to clarify why this board is requesting that your board come to them as opposed to them coming to your meetings, is the fact that if there's a quorum of this board, it's considered a public meeting. So, you know, I don't know if you want me to drag my computer so these 30 people that are on there and these 20 people are there. This is just, I mean, that they, it's a public meeting that they have to have.
Yeah, that's, that's a good clarification too. That's why we would like it to come here.
I would also like to say that when I sent the email to Mr. Donaldson, wanting to know where our funding was, he wanted to know why I did not notify the town of our restructuring. As far as Katrina stepping down as her administration, administrator role. And I felt that was an attack on Poltony Rescue, which I didn't feel was necessary to us. So that conversation that happened via email and I can forward, it did not need to happen today. I was very politely asking for that and that was something that did not need to happen. I'm, we are more than transparent and more than willing. I did not know about the board needing to come and wanting us to come. Mr. Donaldson saying that he wanted to meet with the board, that was the first I had heard about it. I will bring it to the board on Wednesday when we're supposed to meet. And I will be more than happy to let them know that we want to come in, that you guys want us to come in. But I did not.
I can just speak for myself though. I didn't know when people talk about the rescue, I always thought about Katrina. So I didn't know there was a change either. So when people ask me, that's who I said, because that's all I know. So I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't know either.
It's been in the town report every year. Katrina writes the, the, the letter that goes in the town report every year, because I read it every year. So I will be happy to convey it to Walter and Kathy when I see them. Thank you.
Okay. Tax sale proceedings?
Um, so I've reached out to the law firm that has assisted us in the past with tax sales and they are prepared to proceed once I provide some additional information. They're prepared to start proceedings, uh, that we did a couple of years ago at General where, where we, um, you know, warned, warned the delinquent taxpayers that, uh, we are looking for our collection of our funds. So I will work on providing the list that they need to move forward with, um, initial phase, what we call a 30-day letter, which basically says you've got 30 days to become current or we're moving on to the next, the next procedure. So I just wanna let the board know that, because I know we've discussed that recently.
Okay.
So you mentioned wanting to do something with those trailers, various trailers.
Um, yeah, the, the abandoned trailers, I, in the past, I have approached the Board of Civil Authority and they, they, at the time, were not receptive to me, uh, removing them from our tax rolls because, as we discussed, I think in our last meeting or recent meeting, there are several abandoned trailers that every year we're assessing on that the likelihood that they're collecting a tax is, is pretty minimal.
Do we own those or does the people still?
No.
We don't own any of them. We don't own any of the land that the trails are on.
They're abandoned.
Pretty bad shape, they're all broken down, they're a bunch of hazards, yeah, but.
Right, right.
There, there are some trailers that I know have been abandoned on other people's properties. And there's a court procedure, uh, that those landowners could go and, and get a, a court certificate deeming them the owners of the property. Uh, but the one particular owner that, there are several trailers, has been reluctant to do so because the delinquent taxes, uh, follow the, follow the property that's being assessed. In this case, if he took ownership of the abandoned trailers, the taxes follow the abandoned trailers, even though he's represented to me that he just wants to dispose of them. Um, but he's afraid of, you know, the, the, he's afraid of those, those taxes being burdened on him.
So I'm like, some like, if there's other pieces of property with nothing, nobody's been designing a tax sale, the town usually takes home, design.
Well, that's just the trailers, my, trailers are on the other guy's property.
In the last, in the last round of tax sales that we did, there are a number of trailers and in actually real estate that, uh, because the, the firm that I have assisted us with these tax sales is very diligent about crossing all the i's and diving all the i's and crossing all the t's. If they can't find a chain of, who, who they can give a paper to and say, we're doing a tax sale on this, they, they won't do a tax sale on it. Um, and there was a number of, of those, as I said, trailers in real property that they, they couldn't, they couldn't find an owner to serve. So they, you know, there were, there were some that I know, in fact, uh, not trailers, but real estate in a different adjoining town that, that town had done a tax sale on some real estate. And I asked the attorney to handle it, did you find this person? No, no, but we moved forward with it anyways, which.
Hey, we need to bring them back in front of the Board of Civil Authority.
Appreciate it.
I mean, I think, I think they, I think they never depreciated enough. And I've seen them, I've seen the assessor's office, you know, used to be a trailer, now it's a shed. You can assess to the shed.
Highway rumble, basically.
Maybe we need to bring that back in, in front of the Board of Civil Authority.
Just go in there and do something, put some of the doors, that's just all I can.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And now it's down to special event, liquor license, Wayback in here.
So the clerk has presented me, or this board, with a catered permit wedding at Wayback, uh, uh, for September 16th, from 2:30 to 10:00 PM. And then she also, this morning, was another one that she gave me.
Do you have a license for tobacco juice?
We'll get to that one in a second.
Let's finish this first.
Oh.
It was like.
Another, uh, an event at the Regenerative Land Holdings, which is September 2nd, 5:30 to 10:00 PM, uh, a catered event there. So if someone wants to make a motion to approve those.
What are your motion?
I would make this motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second, since it's.
Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carry?
Okay, there is a tobacco license, uh, application for the Dollar General location. And I asked the clerk about this one because in my recollection, the board has never been specifically asked for a tobacco license. And, uh, Betsy Westkin has, has, um, advised me that when they, when the Department of Liquor moved to a online system, they realized that they had to, if, if you're not, usually what happens is you apply for your beer and or wine license and they, they let you, they let the applicant apply for free for their liquor, or excuse me, for their tobacco license. But in this case, because the Dollar General isn't selling beer or wine, they had to separately apply for their tobacco license. So I'm sorry, I understand that.
Interesting answer, P.
Can I just be stupid? When they say tobacco, what is it they really mean they're selling there?
Cigarettes.
So would be cigarettes and cans, filling.
Cigarettes, um, the oral tobacco, the chewing tobacco.
Question, isn't that whole store self-serve? Unlimited in my direction with that store, but how are they gonna make that?
I don't know, the way, the way, the way I understand it is that, uh, the Vermont Department of Alcohol, Alcohol and Tobacco, there's certain rules, you have to have your, behind the counters, whatever. That's why I understand it. But, I don't know, I'm not the expert on this.
That's a good question, I don't know how.
So that is completely self-service?
In my understanding, the public might know better than I do.
The book is.
Is it self-serving? They've got people that can assist and if they lock it up behind some barrier and that was assistance required, it might be worth finding out if they plan on doing that because just having it exposed obviously would be an issue. But, um, I didn't see anything but, so I'll check out things. Of course, there's concerns.
We also want to ask the head of cigarettes to understand them all, just.
How much responsibility is that even be in?
I don't know. I don't know.
Would it be worth asking more questions?
Yes.
Should we ask more questions before we, I don't know.
I, I'm.
Tobacco company, moving up to like.
Let's, let's table it until we can find out if it's under some type of security to minors before we approve the tobacco.
Does anyone, do other Dollar Generals sell tobacco products? I have to like.
If they give the books.
Any books, students, instructors?
Yeah.
Do you have to be, do you have to be seen by?
A motion to table the tobacco license for Dollar General through our next meeting? May I find out if it's secure for minors? Did I hear a second? Did you hear a second?
I thought you made the motion, you're seconding, you made the motion?
One of us did. I think.
Any sec, any comments or questions by the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry? Put it on our next agenda.
Okay.
Tax bills?
Uh, just, just to let the board know, we, we did mail out the tax bills last week. Um, they had to be mailed out by August 15th and they were mailed out last week, so.
By the yellow, by yellow.
Yeah, fair yellow.
Stand up, you know.
They stand up better.
I thought it was the village tax.
You know, stick it somewhere, you're like, that's good. A little bit helps, Mark.
Okay, Maureen Le Bates inquiry into the town-owned property on Fennel Hollow Road.
So there's this very small piece of property that the town has owned since 2008, I believe, on Fennel Hollow Road, in between Maureen Le Bates' property and, uh, the Graff, uh, property. Um, and she's looking, wondering if the town wants to divest itself of the property, wondering if the town wants to allow her to raise horses on the property. Um, I visited with the assessor's office and most, if you look at the. I visited with the assessor's office and most, if you look at the, um, flood maps, most of that small piece of property, it's, it's, it's under an acre, is in the, in the river corridor. Um, so I told her, she sent me a letter and I told her to bring it to the board and ask them if they want me to proceed to hit it all about it.
Is she looking to? Hold that? Because the house has gone through, the town owns, that goes to a certain.
Yes, I know. Um.
Can you sell it if it's in the flood zone?
I mean, you can, yeah. The way I understand it, she just wants to raise horses on it. I don't know. I mean.
Would the town need that piece of land for anything else?
Um.
Not too bad.
No, we have to put it in the paper and go through the whole.
Yeah, you would have to, I mean. I mean, in the past, we've gone to a real estate agent and said, give us your market opinion on what this is worth. Um, you know, and we, the board can direct me to do that. Or the board can say, no, we want to keep it, or the board can tell me something else.
And the board let someone use the land?
I mean, they could, whether that is in the town's best interest, I would venture to say probably no.
Let's, uh, let's see what's, see what it's worth and if needs be, if the board's okay with it. And see what it's worth and, and, uh, needs be, we'll follow the, the protocol on, on, um, getting a land purchased by somebody else because the town really isn't in the business of owning property out in, you know, unless we have our buildings and stuff on it. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
You okay with that? You okay with that? Consensus of the board?
Okay. Um. Um. I don't have any.
You don't have anything else?
Except for we do have a couple of executive session.
And a couple of months before we go on, Aaron, you're here, can I?
My apologies, I've been having to cap the reports together. Um, the amount of time I have this evening, I broke up between family work and here, here and everybody else who needs their time too. Um, quick things. Uh, the Kona family foundation donation that they made to us purchased the U T V trailer and a skid unit to help educate people from the woods on the bike trails and stuff. The delivery of the U T V trailer over the weekend, uh, my lieutenants went down and actually picked it up. Uh, still waiting on the skid unit for the back of it and radios and lights and stuff like that, uh, but otherwise making good progress on that finally. Um, the new truck, uh, I told you guys, uh, last time I was here, it was getting moved up pretty fast. Well, of course it hit the back burner. September is when it starts again. Uh, the chassis is there, the pump module is all built for it. In September, it's supposed to go into the factory line to actually get the pump module put on and then start building the box out the back of it. It's still open for delivery before the end of this year. But they do have four hundred and fifty-two days since October of last year, so. Um, but the light working is working on that. The money that you guys approved from the six hundred fund for the equipment of that, majority of that equipment is here already now, so. Um, you know, you know, hence was hopefully that truck was a move faster split up the equipment, but the equipment is mostly here now, so when that truck does arrive, it will be ready to put all this stuff off, we're ready to work. Um, as, um, Joel asked about the radio repeater, their license has been put through and approved. Fire department side of it, we still haven't seen ours come through yet either, so. Same fence as him, hoping that, you know, ours will finally come through one of these days, so when we did it all out with G M P, it all goes up at once and we're not, you know, having to repeat the repeaters, so. Last, uh, as you heard, the sirens go through, have last twenty-four hours plus or minus have been fairly busy. That's run number three, most of them are still twenty-four hours now for us, so. Uh, but otherwise with the captain's reports, been fairly busy, but they've been sporadic enough where we get three, four calls within twenty-four to forty-eight hours and that a few days of quietness, so. Um. That's all I have for the month.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions for her?
Thank you.
Yes, definitely.
So we, uh, just threw, actually put two new people on the roster, first of July, or start of July. Um, unfortunately, we're losing one that's chasing a, a woman elsewhere. Out of Hawaii, I think I. Uh, we, uh, actually had him. Maybe just over a year, year plus, he went right through fire one, fire two, E M T and all that stuff, but, uh, we, we don't, as, we don't pay, so there's something to chase, chase it. Uh, but we did put two people on. Um, both of them have previous, previously served with us and life came up and now they're taking stuff back up, so. They both have experience, so we just need to bring them back up to speed on what has changed for us, the equipment and stuff like that, so.
Did you get some training too? Did you use some training?
We train every Tuesday night. Training.
No, I thought training for helpers.
Every Tuesday.
Every Tuesday, but, uh, we're, we are slowly trying to work through, I believe. There was a person in the audience here, the last time I was here, said something about set hours to volunteer to do certain things. We are trying to work out a an associate type membership where we do not need you to be a firefighter, but we're going to train you how to take care of our equipment. It works, it works. The big thing, that's where I get bogged down day in and day out. Um, people that hopefully we can bring the skill set into the firehouse that can help us with that type of stuff. We're still trying to work that out and vet it through, everything we have to vet it through, including you guys on insurances to make sure everybody's covered in what they're doing, so. Um, the biggest thing for me for that is the Tuesday night trainings, I want my guys training, guys, gals training. Yes, we need to take top knot care of our equipment, but if we could push that a little off to other people that don't want to wear an airbag, don't want to drive the trucks, don't want the pager waking up in the middle of the night, so be it, but if, you know, we were out all night last night, we put the trucks, and we do every call, the trucks go back in. They might not look as pretty as they did when they left. The stuff on it might still be dirty. If I call three or four people and say, hey, did you go out there today at some point and just wash that stuff up, get everything back the way it needs to be, you know, pristine? Then when we come back around, the guys come in, they're going to have to train the firefighter and stuff, so. It's one of the things we're trying to work out.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brooklyn Regional Planning Commission. Nothing on that tonight.
Sarah, do you have anything on the R R P C?
Um, no, not for the R R P C. Um, the regional board has not met, uh, throughout the summer, but the meetings will resume again in September. Um, I do have a quick report for economic development for quarter two. If you'd like, I can present that tonight or we can table it if you have a lot more on the agenda.
How do you guys feel? Do you want to hear it tonight or do you want to wait until another evening?
Five minutes.
How long? What takes, Sarah?
Well, I talk fast. I could probably do five minutes.
Well, take as long as you need. Let's hear it.
Okay, let me see if I can share my screen with you. At the last meeting that I did this for, it was requested that I share the screen and, uh, the report, so can you see that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so this report is for the second quarter of two thousand twenty-three. Um, I kept some of the indicator data the same as what I used for the first quarter of two thousand twenty-three. Um, and, um, have, you, you, I'm trying to make it, uh, relevant to topics that are happening um, or things that are changing in Poltonee. So, um, this is, um, April, May and June. And, uh, the business update includes four new businesses that have opened, um, in that time. Lila's Boutique, Porcupine Bike Shop, sorry, I'm at home. Huntington Fine Arts, Damascus International. Uh, there was one business that closed, the Full Belly Deli. Um, sorry, I might need to, uh.
All right, it's okay.
Little help here for a second.
Ice cream.
Where can you hide, Sarah?
I can't hide. All right, but there are other adults. Sorry, you might want to continue on for a second without me.
You want to save it till the next meeting?
So, all right, sorry. Okay, so the business update includes, uh, a business that closed, Full Belly Deli, we already covered that. Uh, business expansion, I included Baka Spirits in this, um, the Baka Spirits has been advertising an inaugural class, um, uh, on campus this year. And, uh, we have been working together on some grant, grants for the town for the community, um, and there have been estimates of, uh, several new jobs that are, um, available on the campus. And, um, uh, so we also have one educational facility, which is actually, um, contracted at the very end of the quarter, so July first. Uh, the Greater Rutland County Supervisory Union is hosting a pilot program at the G M P facility that's on York Street. So that, uh, the target audience for that is the, uh, supervisory union student body. And it will be opening this, um, in this coming, uh, year, uh, school year. So the sales and tax use receipts for the quarter, um, it's based on the quarter one of two thousand twenty-three, which is available from the state. Um, it was over eleven million dollars, which this was an interesting number to me because it dropped six point four percent from the previous receipts, uh, which was quarter one of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the four, the gross count of businesses was forty-five, which was also a drop of three businesses from the quarter previous to that. Um, I don't know, um, exactly where, where these numbers are coming from, what the drop is uh, could be attributed to, but those are the numbers that have, um, had, um, been reported by the Department of Taxes. Uh, meals and rooms tax receipts is still reporting from quarter four of two thousand twenty-two, at which point it was up eight point one percent. Um, I wrote to the Department of Taxes today because these, these, this data, the statistics has not been updated for the town of Poltonee in a very long time, um, since that quarter took place. And I don't know why, so I'm waiting for them to return that, to return my email, um, with that information. Uh, so a quick project update on some of the things that I'm working on. The Vorak Grant, which has been, uh, we've had for quite some time, um, is ready to complete the final deliverable for the grant, which is an economic impact assessment. We have determined that there's enough money in the grant to contract the work, so we will be doing that and completing it before the end of the year. The Better Connections Town to Trails Projects, the project deadline is September thirtieth, and we had a steering committee meeting today where we, um, reviewed the implementation plan that will be presented to the community prior to September thirtieth. Um, so that project's coming along, um, really nicely. Um, there, I am also working with the village and the Regional Planning Commission on rail trail improvements, uh, which is funded by a Vermont Department of Health Quick Build Grant. So there will be three new benches and a kiosk on the rail trail before the end of September, and I, I'd estimate there is also a fix-it station that's coming along, um, and that will be located behind the old, uh, village office, the old firehouse. Um, this week I am working on the Municipal Energy Resiliency Program, um, applications for buildings, uh, town buildings to, for that program, which will result in an, an assessment, an energy efficiency assessment, which will then enable those buildings to, if they're selected, enable them to be eligible for additional funds, um, for grants that are coming this year. Um, some other new development, the charging stations are finished at the G M P York Street location. There's one level two charging station with two plugins and one level three charging station. Um, and I am also, I've been spending a lot of time, well, not a lot, I've been spending some time with the community, um, trying to identify opportunities for community-led development of youth after school and enrichment programs. Um, I'm also working with P D R C and sitting on that, uh, committee. Um, I've provided a little bit of help for the Poltonee Murals Project, which was primarily, um, technical assistance in reviewing the grant application and budgets. Um, and I am also working with a few folks in the community, um, via P D R C to, uh, a, address garden spaces, public garden spaces that are in the community, specifically at Lake Corey Park Stone, the Stonebird Terrain Gardens and the planting beds on Main Street. So I think you've heard enough from me. Feel free to ask me any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Sarah? Sarah, when we were meeting about the youth, the, the kids and stuff, some of the things they were talking about were mini hubs, like maybe the senior center for movie night for parents and kids.
Okay.
And, and I'm going to take that next Monday to, to the senior center meeting and see if they're, if they're, you know, um, think that that's acceptable to do. And also the senior center and talking with the priest to see if we can get a mini hub in the, in the old school, the, um, um, not senior center, the Catholic Center, Catholic Center has another mini hub for, for kids to do things in. We're also talking about possibly looking at, if there was any way we can get the boys and girls clubs during the summer months here and maybe incorporating it with, into our rec department also. Just, just, we're just discussing it. Don't know what the dollar ramifications would be or if it's even feasible, but that's what we're discussing.
This meeting is being recorded. The recording has stopped.
That, that's what we're, that's what we're, uh, looking at now.
That's great. Thank you. And I'll keep an eye out, um, there are different grant programs that can help fund those types of things. It's a little outside of my wheelhouse in terms of grants that I've, that I'm used to, um, applying for or looking for, but I will certainly start to put some feelers out um, for funding sources for programs and, um, spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any, anything for Sarah?
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Ice cream, that's what they need.
Sorry about that.
That's fine. Have a good night. Okay, aren't the public comments and concerns?
Well, Mark Flynn shared a chat on the Zoom. Could the board please provide an update on the South Street Bridge if the easements have been completed? If the last meeting of the state said they could put a bridge in if the current bridge were to fail before replacement bridge was ready, I feel this worth keeping on the forefront. Thanks for your time, Mark Flynn. Um, the last time I spoke with those folks, uh, they had not completed, uh, the easement acquisition. Um, in fact, they, they had met with the, I think all or most of the affected landowners that would require easements uh, preliminarily, in fact, um, before they usually would have. Um, so I can check with them, Mark, and report back to the board at our next meeting if there's any additional information.
Okay, Mark?
Is he good? Thanks for your help.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for helping us.
Nice.
I can't see that part.
Wow.
Any other public comments or concerns?
I just have one question. Um, I don't know if Sarah's still on, but I had asked at, um, the July twenty-fourth meeting, if there's any additional info on the highway garage. And, um, supposedly Sarah was supposed to provide something for the next meeting. I don't know if you have an update though, Sarah. She's still looking around.
Okay, what's that Blair Witch Project? Remember that movie?
Many years.
I'm, uh, I'm doing the best I can tonight. Um, so the Municipal Energy Resilience Program that I was talking about, um, is the first grant that we would be looking at. Um, that program will provide, I, I got a chance to read through the program narrative, um, very closely and it looks like, um, if we do that and qualify for, um, and they, they determine that the building is not viable, you can then, um, use funds from that program, which will be forthcoming to invest in energy efficiency in a new building. to invest in energy efficiency in a new building. So you could buy the mechanicals, you could buy, you know, things that go into a building envelope if you're creating a new building. So that is the first step that we have towards, you know, funding a new town garage. That's really all I have to report on at the moment. I think, you know, the Better Connections project is still, one of the goals of that was to help determine whether the site that the town garage is currently on is the location that it should remain. So, you know, I'm also holding off until we have a final report on that to help inform what happens next with the town garage.
Maybe we should take the pictures of all the buckets they have in the garage with the rain falling down. Real energy efficiency.
Mary Sue, does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comments or concerns? Yes, sir?
Yes, I'm working on that one. And I don't really understand the way the procedure should have been. The question and the reason I came here tonight was for re-designation of certain roads. For the man of that prize. And do I understand that you're shelving that for the next meeting?
Yes, we're tabling that to the next meeting. Yes. Yeah, because it's kind of lengthy tonight. Yes. Any other comments or public comments or concerns?
Could you say your name again, sir?
Collins, P E R N S, last name. First name Moore, L O H R.
Thank you.
I guess not. Right? I guess at this time, do I hear a motion to sign the board orders?
Yes, we should sign.
Do I hear a second? There isn't any hands up behind me, is there?
I'm checking. I don't see...
Well, we're there. Any comments or questions by the board? Right here. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carry? Nobody, no other hands? Okay. We have executive session tonight. We have two contractual matters. We're here for another couple hours.
We may put that on the record.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. It was a warm night. What's that?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh. The next meeting is two weeks. It would be on the 24? No, 28. The next meeting is...
28.
28. 6:30 here.
Do you want to make the motions?
I'm listening. So I want to make the one VSA, section 313A1. I make a motion that is awardifying that feature general public dollar that slates for our first involved at a stand for disadvantage of certain matters made in the contract discussed outside of executive session. President went to one VSA, section 313A1A. I make a motion and review that in session to discuss contract matters.
Please, John.
Your second?
Got that one. And if you don't use that, you can stop reading up.
Any comments or questions by the board? No, we'll read that for the rest of the time. Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Motion carry. Good night, everyone. Thank you.